I'd like to call a meeting into order. Could you lead us, Rick, in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure.
Would you like to stand up? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have row call list?
Bryce, here. Hayden.
Present.
MacArthur.
Here.
McAvoy.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Palshon. Here. Okay. Also, in your pack tonight, we have the minutes from February 5th, 2019, a draft.
Agenda.
Anybody have? Oh!
Agenda.
I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Aye, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to approve the agenda as written. Now, we have approval of the minutes from February 5th, 2019.
May I move these off the minutes as printed?
Seconded.
I think we have approval on second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to approve the minutes as written. Item six, public comments.
On agenda items.
This is for...
Agenda items.
Anything other than the public hearing.
Yes, public hearing's coming down from nine.
They had a public comment on master plan or CIP or something like that. Now would be the time.
Does anybody there? Just a general public comment. Does anybody have anything? If not, we'll move on. Chair person comments. It's good to see that the village council finally got through the massive master plan. It's back in our court. Hopefully, we can get that review, all that, and get that moving forward so we can set up the master plan. Anybody else?
Seconded.
No other items from the commissioners? We'll move on.
I do have one short item. I did attend a Row Services Professional event. It was a seminar on municipal site plan checklist and how to review site plans. And it was very interesting. And I'll see if I can get the materials from that presentation and make them available so that we can share them with the rest of the planning commission. It was very informative.
I think I might already have them.
Okay. Great. Great. But I would highly recommend if there's other free seminars like that, it's definitely worthwhile getting there and attending those because they have a lot of good information.
Okay.
Liz, will you be passing those out then to us?
I will. I can forward them via email and print for you if you like.
Oh, perfect. I'll do email.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We'll move on to public hearing. Proposed changes in zoning map for parcel 03-18-102-006, 300 South Street, from public to M15 corridor commercial zoning.
I think we need a motion to go on a public hearing, right? Or we need a motion to go on a public hearing, right?
No, you don't.
No, we don't?
No.
He just opens the public hearing.
So, does anybody in the public have any questions?
You've got to open it first.
What?
Open the public hearing.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry about that, folks.
It's okay.
Okay, it's open.
I have a question. What is going to be brought into this property? What kind of business? I want to see a little more. My question is what kind of a business is going to be in this property once it gets rezoned?
I guess...
I'm Michelle Dodgers. I would next go into the library.
We can't answer questions in public hearing, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So, we would be able to address that when the public hearing is closed.
Okay. I thought he asked for questions. I'm sorry.
No, that's true. We'll answer when we're allowed to. Yeah.
Why more than just that one question?
Go for it. What else do you have?
I'm also concerned, has anybody done any research on how this change is going to impact the property values of the adjacent properties?
All right. Do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No, this is my very first meeting and I just wanted to see what you guys did down here. Hello.
I have one.
Name?
I have an adjacent property.
Kit Capson.
I'm sorry. Kit Capson. 174 Mill Street, directly north of this property that we're speaking of. My initial question was intent for usage. And you said it very well. Impact property value if it is rezoned per...
Commercial.
And this is not commercial. This is corridor commercial, which allows you, basically, you have specialized things that you can do, like an accounting office or things of that nature. If I'm correct, and if I'm not right.
Could we answer him?
We can't answer him, but we can, after the conclusion, go through all the things that are allowed in M15 corridor commercial.
So, you want to know how it's zoned?
I want to know how it's zoned.
Okay.
Is it commercial or corridor commercial? And in doing so, I would like to see the impact property value set. Go ahead. That is directly off my back door. I didn't... Okay, he's... I'm new to this place. It is directly out my back door. I look right across all of this. I don't want anything to impact my property. Period. That's very important. If so, what would they do with the view? Like trees? Do something? I do not know who is representing. Are the owners? Does anybody represent any of the owners?
I am.
Yeah, the property owners...
Very nice.
No, I know.
The property owners... Excuse me. The property owners are allowed to speak after, you know, you're not supposed to go back and forth with each other.
I just...
So, the property owners are allowed to speak during public hearing and explain what they're going to do with the property. And maybe that answers a whole bunch of questions that people have.
So, my two base questions.
We have somebody behind you, too.
Are you here?
Do you have something?
No.
And we'll turn it over to you.
No, that's fine. I'm Barry.
Frank, I think Frank, you're here with Barry.
I'm Frank Wise. I'm here with the Bass.
One last question. No. I retract.
Okay. Barry, go.
I'm Barry Bass, BLB. I own Bedrock up here 35 years. Basically, I bought the school to hopefully turn it into a sports complex, training inside and outside. It's been a sports place for, I think, since 1973, outside, with the, obviously, the school for that. And we're going to do basketball training, pretty much every kind of sport. If you've got kids or grandkids or something, you travel everywhere to take them training. It could be from here to Ohio for simple stuff or whatever. And not quite like a legacy. I don't know if anybody's been to Legacy in Oxford.
Yeah.
Similar to that, but more based on training kids from, you know, grade school up to high school and that. And then there's fun stuff, too, going to be there. So, as far as answering his question about the view, obviously, it's all subject to... I hired Keith Engineering once it gets this proposal approval or whatever to the first step. And then, obviously, you've got your site plans and all your... I don't want it to bawl too much, but it's going to be a really nice place and that. Hopefully, we got a plan. Talked to the library and they agreed with it, subject to everything, to put in a driveway off M15, share a driveway with the... Because, you know, when you tell somebody to go to a soccer game, we've been playing soccer here for 10, 15 years with the kids. When you tell somebody to go to a soccer game or varsity drive, there's no way to get there really on your Google map or whatever. And you're driving around. It's good for all the other stores, but it'd be nice to have a driveway. Like, when I first came up here, I believe you could turn left there at A&amp;W 35, 40 years ago, whatever it was. And it was, you know, it's a mess that part. So, that's minor, but it's part of the plan.
Okay.
Now, these guys are allowed to talk. Like, can he ask him a question or no?
No.
These two can now?
No.
Okay.
At this point.
At this point? Okay.
Once the public hearing closes, the discussion of the people in the audience ends.
Right. But that's... Okay, so...
Can I ask a group question?
We won't be able to respond until after the public hearing closes.
Now, is this public hearing to for allow or disallow? Or does it... What's the next step? Is there an additional step on the survey?
We can explain that afterwards.
Afterward. We'll explain. There's a process involved, Kit.
I'm unaware.
At this point, I guess I could say is we're here to change the zoning from public...
Close the public hearing.
Close the meeting.
There are no public comments. I don't think there are public comments.
To corridor commercial, correct? Or commercial? Or you can't answer that because that's what the state's saying.
Any other questions?
Sort of corridor commercial.
If not...
Close public hearing.
End of public hearing.
Now, we can try to... Now, let's try to answer some questions. This first step, all this first step is, is the rezoning step. As far as, then there'll be other steps down the road where if Barry decides to change the footprint of what's going on in the property right now, then he'll have to come back to this group here again, the planning commission, with a site plan review. There is only one commercial... There's only one commercial classification in our village, and that is M15 corridor commercial. That's the only commercial classification, other than industrial. And obviously, this does not fit in industrial usage. There is a ton of things that can go into commercial, the M15 corridor commercial. Matter of fact, we could, if we, if you print off a... We could probably print off a list and show what the acceptable uses are. As you go through, there are specific things that are allowed totally, you know, in the M15 corridor commercial. And then there's those things that I'm going to say are allowed with... They're allowed, but they have some special hooks in them, for lack of a better term, or special restrictions in there. So, at the point in time that, say, for an example, you go from what they call commercial sports indoor, there is a use in our commercial classification for that. There are specific requirements that are with that that you'll talk about at the time in the site plan. And then, if you go to commercial sports outdoor, there are specific things that you would look at at the time that you talk about the site plan, such as things like buffering and that kind of thing. As we've master planned this piece of property, as you would with any other public property that's sold to a private entity, we look at this property and say, okay, what would we want this, if this ever did turn from public to private, what would you want it zoned as? Our master plan currently, right now, says that we want this zoned M15 corridor commercial. The county has, and I could real quick grab a map, as late as 2017... And this is called inside and outside the village, has kind of designated any properties, and this would include the library. If they ever say, 20 years from now, the library says, hey, we want to close up and we want to offer it for sale, then you can see Oakland County, all those orange properties along M15, both in Groveland Township and all the way down into, in the village and down there, they're all designated, for lack of a better term, as M15 corridor properties. Even if they don't have someone ask a question earlier about driveways, you know, you don't have to have a driveway to be an M15 property. So, really, the only question that the planning commission would have at this point in time is, does the intended request for rezoning meet our master plan, future master plan uses for the property? Then, at the next step, when the site plan gets developed and stuff, you talk about restrictions or whatever you'd want put on. As far as the other question regarding property values, nobody can ever... Anybody that says that they can guarantee you that property values are going to increase or decrease is either a fool or lying because they can't. They can't tell you. It's a best guess. In most cases, when you have a, what is considered a development like this versus potentially an abandoned school or abandoned building, we know that an abandoned building is going to lower your property values. So, an abandoned schoolhouse doesn't have a heck of a lot of uses. So, you know, we can tell you if it's an abandoned property, you know, it's going to lower your property values. We can't tell you, can't guarantee that it's going to increase your property values and you're going to make a lot of money on it, but it should stabilize that neighborhood. It has been already assessed at, and this is public information, at approximately $590,000. And that'll add around $5,000 a year to the property tax valuation. That is without further development. So, that adds $5,000 just in the, just in the village. That doesn't count the property tax increase for the county and the township also. So, from that standpoint, it helps you because it gives you more money to do things in the village and in the township.
That means my taxes will go down?
I can't talk to you. You've got to gamble. Lee, you're out of control. Those people are talking. You've got to gamble.
You've got to add a little fun.
But that, hopefully, that answers your questions. That any use that he, you know, that the subject we're dealing with tonight with the zoning should be, you know, almost a slam dunk because it fits what we've planned and wanted to do. But there's another step to this, even after, even for the zoning. Once it's, if the council here approves the zoning, then it goes to the village council for also, not another public hearing, but, you know, a review to see if they also agree with it being changed. And then the site, then the nice...
We basically make a recommendation to the village council and the final decision is made by the village council without another public hearing.
No. Not for the zoning.
There will be same thing, a place to speak on items on the agenda, but there will not be a specific public hearing.
Yeah. And I would like to add that regarding the property values and the usage and such, as it stands right now, being zoned public, that property cannot be used for anything other than a school or a church or a government office. And so, the value of that within our community in terms of bringing any new businesses or new event centers or whatever that can increase the general value of the village by having more amenities within the village is very limited unless we adjust the zoning. So, you know, we want to see that property become more useful in terms of what can be used for in the community upfront. And I think in general, anytime we improve the available resources and services and things in our community, that in general raises and increases the value of our community and should, in the long run, increase property values throughout the community. That's just my view, though. When it comes to the screening question, from my perspective, I just went to a seminar, as I mentioned, on site plan reviews and things like that. And that really is a step at which we would take a really close look. If they do nothing, as Bill had mentioned, the footprint doesn't change, the building is just used as it sits existing, and there's no changes maybe to the building, other than just a comment and start using it, then there's not any site plan review or anything that we can do because it's already an existing facility. But if they want to change that footprint or start putting in more parking or drives and things like that, then they would submit a site plan. And at that time, we can review the site plan and take into considerations like screening to adjoining properties to ensure that it's not going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood and properties around there. So, that would be the appropriate time that we could take a look at those issues and make sure...
You will be notified on that also.
Yes. Everybody within, what is it?
300 feet.
300 feet will get notice for the site plan review.
See that, and to answer one of the questions, and you can find it if you go online in our zoning ordinances, where it says uses of properties. And it tells you, you know, that you go down that whole C column, and it's mixed use residential, non-residential. It can be used for cultural, municipal, daycares, essential services, hospitals, with special, with a special use permit, place of worship, public recreation, which public recreation is different than commercial recreation because it's a non-for-profit. You'd have to be a not-for-profit, like YMCA or something. You'd have to be like a 501(c)(3) or something that had like a recreational facility.
That's the current public zoning that you're talking about.
No. This is C. Cor...
Corridor.
Yep. Adult-oriented businesses with all sorts of, there's like 12 pages of criteria and it would never fly.
The township knocked that one out.
Yeah. It would, well, we're the village. Banks, commercial indoor, commercial outdoor with special tweaks, drive-in facility, accessory to the principal use, but not as primary use, galleries or studios, hotels, offices, outdoor dining, accessory to a specific restaurant, personal services, place of assembly, several different categories, restaurants, private clubs, retail sales indoor, retail sales outdoor, both restricted and non-restricted, with, that means special hooks in both of those categories, and veterinary special hook, vehicle service minor with special hooks. But, and then last but not least, accessory buildings could be built to proper footprint. So, there's a lot of uses, but a lot of, most of them has, you know, special controls in it to where if you were to do like a vehicle sale operation or something like that, you would have to put all sorts of berms and screening and lighting and, when I say lighting, non-directed lighting and that kind of thing so it doesn't interfere with the neighbors, so...
And you don't have to worry about those concerns being addressed because, as you know, my property's right next to yours there and also butts up that. So, I'll make sure that any concerns you have are aired out in our public hearing and at the site plan review. Just talk to me about it.
But it's a great opportunity and I, you know, not too often, I'm sorry, I'm talking too much, since it's my last one. But I live up in LaPire and they closed the school literally 20 years ago and have not sold it yet. And so, I've got to deal with the old LaPire High School and people breaking into it all the time and drugs and bums and that kind of thing. And these buildings, it's great that, you know, this is a great accomplishment that this thing got turned over and great opportunity for the village.
But then, just for the record, I'm sorry, I'm just getting my voice back. I just want to have it on record that it is strictly right now being looked at as a training facility for sports indoor and outdoor. Because I know I had some people asking me about the vehicles that were there, and there were comments that, you know, and I'm sorry, this is just what they told me. It was repo cast site number two. And I know people don't want that. So, this, just for the record, I want to make sure that that's what we're looking at it for. So, if that does change, they have to come before us. And then, is there any, in regard to Barry and his organization, keeping us up to speed with what's happening, is there any way we can get better communication? Or I don't think there's any template we have to go by, but it would be nice to know what is happening. What has happened in the past or what would you recommend?
Typically, typically, unless there's building permits or, you know, where he's doing changes within the building or if he, like, I can't remember if it was Larry said earlier, if there's a site plan changed or he starts changing the outside and putting structures in, then he has to come back for a site plan.
Other than that, when there's a specific related to, but other than that, we, there's no process in place for being updated?
Well, I think...
Well, you still got to, you still got to go through this step with the zoning, and then he's got to come back with the use.
But you're just talking about regular, day-to-day stuff?
Or just, you know, we've heard so many different things, and I kind of feel inadequate because we're planning commission, which means we're supposed to know what's going on, but we don't. And, you know, is there a restaurant? Isn't there a restaurant? You know, is there a skating rink? Isn't there a skating rink? And some of that directly relates to the master plan. When we were looking at items, like someone wanted to do a skating rink downtown, my opinion was, well, why would we do that if Barry's going to have one? So, it would just nice, it'd be nice to have some type of communication to know, especially while we're doing this master plan.
But isn't with the zoning, changing the zoning to the M15 corridor has nothing to do with the site plan?
Correct.
It's only, he can do anything on that piece of property that C says he can do.
Correct.
And then, alls we do is make sure that he follows whatever those were for those specific uses, correct?
Correct.
And did you say that it is not a requirement to have a driveway off M15?
No, it's not. No, that's an additional.
Why would we want to allow something to go in there that massive and not have it?
I think we'd have to take a look.
You'd have to look at that on the site plan.
That'd be in the site plan, okay.
But he said he wants one. He wants one.
Well, I don't care.
Well, I mean, I...
Are you against it?
Yeah.
Are you against that? I mean, you don't think that's a good idea?
I'm against not having an entrance.
Oh, yeah. That's what, yeah.
So, I think we're all...
We're all on the same page. Okay.
But I don't, I don't have to put one up, but I'm thinking it's going to be a good idea to put one up.
I think that's what...
Especially every time I go to, you have to cut through the bank or...
Well, I mean, I...
I didn't say that.
But that's what Bob's pointing out is, if you don't have to and you say you want to change your mind, that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah. I think that we would have to check with Phil Deneen whether, if he expands in any way the footprint of the building or parking or stuff like that, I think we'd have to check with Phil Deneen whether there, that could be something that could be required in the site plan if there was some expansion of...
I don't know if expanding would even require it. I think it is the way it's set.
Well, like I said, I think it's a good idea to have it, but I don't know what we can, can I... we can, can I know like, for example, when you have a business going up on M-15, you can require like deceleration lanes and things like that? I don't know what sort of requirements.
It's going to be a state of Michigan thing because they can say no because of the traffic flow.
Yeah.
With 10 deceleration lanes, it could be just a no and you're fighting them for five years, so.
Yeah, so I mean.
It's not really up to me.
Yeah, I know, we'd have to, we'd have to check with Bill Deneen to see what.
Couldn't get the school to put one in either.
What sort of.
Yeah, and it'd be kind of difficult, it's kind of difficult to require a accepted zoning in the master plan to put in a driveway when you had a school there that had 500 kids. And now, now a place that's probably going to have a maximum of a couple hundred or something at any time, you know, how would you, you know.
Require it?
Yeah, it's, you know.
Yeah, I, I would like to express one concern that was raised to me by some neighbors along the street there that have seen a lot of activities as Melanie mentioned. There's been, seen lots of cars there, there've been seen apparently sporting events already happening there. I heard that at one point there was an entire wrestling team.
My kid plays basketball there.
No, I heard that there was a whole wrestling team came out of the facility one time.
Well, I heard a lot of threats that people calling me on the phone saying all this stuff I'm doing. And it's, the Edison bill can't even get changed yet because, because it's, so, that's why it's not, it's not happening in a month or whatever it is. It takes a long time and I'm still cleaning out the junk for the school left there.
I'm just saying is that I had some, you know, there were some concerns brought to me with, with some of the neighbors by me. As I mentioned, I live right on Mill Street, right behind that property too. And I've heard things, people seen things that.
And I let people play there, I let them do all their 5K and all that stuff. There's nothing else going on there. The, the library has to use it all the time for different stuff.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, and I kind of said that, I, you know, we obviously can't keep, keep people that are just in the community coming in and using it like for basketball courts and things like that. But there were a few things that seemed like there might have been activities happening inside the building that were brought to my attention.
They had a bribe too.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to say that, you know, we certainly are in favor of rezoning, but, you know, we're hoping also that, you know, of course, that all the current restrictions and considerations are in place and that there's respect for the neighboring properties and stuff, so it's not going to be disruptive to our residents.
Right.
Do you have a timeframe?
No, because just like I said, it's taken six months and the Detroit Edison bill is still in Brandon schools. Because Edisons are something else, consumers, we switch right over, but it's, it's hard to change something that's public or governmental thing to private.
Right.
It just doesn't happen overnight.
Oh, no, 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 no. I was just curious, what, personally, you thought maybe your timeframe?
Oh, I thought it was going to be this winter, but, but when you can't even get the electric bill into your name yet.
Yeah, right on.
It's crazy.
Okay. Entertain a motion to, you need to entertain a motion, I believe they were doing, did you have a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, you need to have a motion that the Village, Ortonville Planning Commission does hereby direct the commissioner and chairperson to sign, no, we don't need that one, I'm sorry. You need to entertain a motion to forward the, that you're in favor of the rezoning of the property. You got, you give me the wrong one.
I need to do a motion for that one.
You know what Larry is.
You need a motion of support recommending to the village council rezoning of the property from P to C.
Anybody like to?
Larry's usually pretty good with the wordiness, I'll second it, but, yeah.
I make motion to recommend approval of the rezoning application that was submitted for.
BLV Enterprises.
To parcel 03-18-102-006, from current plat zoning of public to a new zoning classification of M-15 corridor commercial.
Second.
Hey, if you supported it, you'll.
Does that sound like a proper motion?
Let me repeat, can I repeat it to you?
Yep.
Motion to recommend approval of rezoning application submitted for parcel 03-18-102-006 from current plat zoning of public to M-15 corridor commercial.
Everything but, it needs to be changed, where is it? It needs to be changed instead of approving, recommending.
Recommendation to the village council.
To the village council.
Approval to the village council.
Zoning change, of the rezoning change, because they actually.
Yeah, I thought that's what it says, is recommend approval of the.
Yeah, recommend approval.
Yeah, didn't I say that?
No.
What did I say?
Okay.
Approval.
Okay, motion to recommend approval to the village council of rezoning application submitted for parcel, parcel number from current plat zoning of public to M-15 corridor commercial.
Perfect.
We have a second to the motion.
Correct.
Rick did, all right. Everybody here quiet, sleep that way, okay?
It's okay, if that's the worst thing happens to everyone.
I guess we have a roll call vote?
MacArthur?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Caution?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Okay, that's. Move on to.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing that site plan.
So, I'm saying, this will go to next week's, what is it, 14th? When's the next bill?
It'll go on to the 20th or the 30th.
Yeah, it'll go, it'll be on the regular village council agenda on the 20th.
20th.
Okay, so you will see, keep engineering doing surveying for the site plan, so see people around there that are not.
And clean inside, we're just doing cleaning.
We're cleaning still.
I'm Pam Patterson.
Thanks, all right, see you later.
Thank you.
And now we have plenty of room here.
We have no, okay, we have no new business, we're moving on to unfinished business. Master plan draft review.
Look at this there.
Hey. What's that?
Look at that says on the front.
What does it say?
Ortonville.
Master plan, doesn't say master plan.
Okay.
It's all right, just keep.
Well, no, just, you guys, it was PDF, they converted it to Word so I could make the changes and then it got converted back to PDF, so the fonts are off, the.
So, we're on content.
So, don't hassle me.
She's a marketer and red.
Now the pump's in for the pain, just the content.
Basically.
So, I took a chance and did not plug in my computer, that's all I'm saying.
That's frequent.
Same frequent.
Basically, what I, I read in it was, other than anything that had to do with the wildlife refuge, which axed out for the park up here.
Yep.
And.
They don't want a wildlife refuge up here?
They don't.
No, they, they don't want anything to be done with the wildlife preservation.
No, they just want.
That's the park, not the weed garden, right?
Yes, that's, that's the great big thing in green there says Ortonville.
They took some beautiful grass and they put weeds in there. Let's all sneeze.
What are we doing now?
The page number are off.
Well, this, I went through, reviewed a lot of it, I mean, a bunch of them that I reviewed, there was verbiage changes, which I felt were proper.
17.
But the biggest thing is anything to do with this park over here was axed out of the master plan.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, I think the first significant change was in future land use, if I, if my notes are.
Can I ask a quick question?
Okay.
Do, are we required to accept their changes or is it just a suggestion, their changes? I'm just asking because I don't know.
The process is that, the council has final approval on the master plan. We are, we have the responsibility to create the draft. Because the council made changes that were substantive, meaning that they changed the intent of some of the content in here, that means that it has to come back to us for review.
Okay.
And we have to either accept those changes that were made or we could make our own counter changes or counter proposals back.
Okay.
I did, I had concerns raised at the last review from the council meeting, from some, from the council members, that they were concerned that this, is this going to start in the process where it's kicked back and forth a lot of times? What I expressed to them, and I, and I made it clear that I cannot speak for the rest of the planning commission here, but I expressed to them that my impression was that unless there was some, something that they changed that the planning commission felt deviated significantly from the intent for the public, what the public intent is or what the public will is for the, the community, that I think, I don't think that the public planning commission would have any concerns with the minor changes that were done unless it's been significantly changed and deviated away from the, what we perceive as the will of the public.
Okay.
And I, and I even expressed that in that case, I think the best thing would be we would try to find any specific topic like that and try to set up a joint meeting if we could try to work that out amicably together before we just start kicking back and forth. Because I don't want this to drag up forever, you know?
No, 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 I was just asking.
And I think from my point of view, the most of the items that were struck versus altered were secondary statements. So, the first statement hypothetically would be developing the riverfront with waterfront activities, just throwing it out there. The secondary statement might have said kayaking at near park. They were more concerned about picking a specific item that was going to be in a specific location versus the overall use of the riverfront.
Oh, okay.
And so, I think the compromise tend to be more of, let's not focus on the specifics, let's focus on, we'd like to develop the riverfront activities and leave it at there.
Okay.
And then we can research and come to a decision as to what might be the best activities for it.
Okay.
They were concerned about if a resident would say, well, I want kayaking at the riverfront at this, at near park. That one person might have said that, is that the consensus, blah, blah, blah. So, we just kind of said, let's not focus on it, let's focus on riverfront activity development at the riverfront.
Right, because that is.
And then you can decide which parks and what activities. So, I think I, in my opinion, the bulk of the items that were taken out were secondary, more pigeonhole statements than an overall statement.
Okay.
I don't think it was drastic, I think it was, like I said, just the concern on.
To make it more general.
Have we decided that? Whereas I think to us that was more of a vision, to them it was more of a definitive, oh, this is what we're doing with it. And I think to us the vision might be, oh, hey, how about a kayak here?
Yeah, we could do all this.
So, I think we kind of said, you know, let's just strike it and we'll develop from there.
And you should with the bicycle pass and everything too, didn't they?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, one of the things that was.
Well, should we, are we going to tape this in?
Yeah, what's going on here?
Yeah, so I guess the first one would be page 17.
Yeah, the page numbers were changed as well.
So, if you're looking at the striped version?
Well, we're looking at what we got today, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at page 17.
Well, that's not the first.
Page you're looking at, right?
Well, I will go back one, so my page.
You know, it was a lot easier in PDF to see what was changed than this here, because this is all updated, right?
Oh, the introduction.
Yeah, this one is coming back from council, so this is the changes they made.
The changes are made.
Yeah, so that's the one everyone should be looking at.
I don't see if you know page 10. Well, they're going to do different.
Which picture are you reading?
These are the master plan.
These we do.
What I'm saying is page numbers, they're, they're different than.
Oh, yeah, if you just go with what the page number is here.
What were we supposed to change on the introduction page?
I'm not saying we're supposed to change anything.
Oh.
What I'm saying is, on the introduction page, this page, what it says is, Ortonville master plan sets forth the visions that village leaders and residents have for the future of Ortonville and serves as a guide for achieving that vision. That's to set up a mindset here, village leaders and residents. We want their input and the plan is based on village, it should be based on village residents' wishes.
Yeah, okay. And that's why I did say that if there were any changes back from the planning commission, it would because, it would in my opinion, only be because we felt that it somehow had strayed away from the vision of the residents.
Which are, by the way, recorded in here.
Yes.
In the summary of public. And on the next page, we're talking, page 10, it still is page 10.
Page 10, right?
Page 10, uses of the master plan.
Okay, yeah.
And the, the statements here, starting with number four, the master plan provides guidance and coordination in the provision of public services, understanding long-term growth as help in making decisions for public investments such as parks and infrastructure. And the next one says, can be the basis, the master plan can be the basis for proactive projects and programs to improve, improve the community. Fundamental part of the master planning process is the public involvement that forms the basis for the future land use plan and indicates the community's desires for its future and long-term vision. And the third one says, well, actually, it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, and it says, a master plan presents the vision of a community over the next 20 years but also includes a number of specific short-term implementation activities intended to realize the overall vision of the plan. Okay, I just wanted to point those things out because those are very basic ideas here, which I think we need to follow as we're going through and evaluating these changes.
Where's that?
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make sure.
Nothing changed.
Well, I thought, I thought we had identified that something was supposed to change.
No, no.
Mission zoning enabling act.
That's what I did to learn that.
Mission planning enabling act. No, those are the right ones, okay.
That's right. That was from your 500 changes.
So, the first changes are on 17.
Okay, yeah.
Here we go.
Let's go.
17 and 18.
We got a long book.
Yeah.
And a short.
But can I ask, how many times did council meet on this?
Was it three or four?
Three.
Three, I thought we combined the last one.
Well, the fourth was combined with the budget.
Basically, three and a half.
The approval of it was the first 15 minutes of the budget.
Okay, and then I do know, I watched meetings, I don't know which meeting it was, but I watched a lot of those and I, I just, the feeling that I got was the council's kind of doing us a favor out of respect for us to be allowed to look at this, but they're not going to agree to change it, any, any changes we make. So, if that's the case, let's not waste our time tonight. Just saying. Did I take that correctly when I, kind of, was that the gist of it from the, did I watch?
I think that there may be a few council members that might feel in that position, but I think that the council as a whole, if the changes had, were very well considered and they were not too out of line, I think that there is, there is some flexibility with some of the other council members. But yeah, you're right, I think there are some councils that members that just say.
That what we've done was well considered, I think we put a lot of time in it, a lot of thought in it.
And that's why I said, if we do find something substantive that we don't agree with in terms of the council's version, I would suggest that we try to identify that specific topic and try to come up with what we would feel comfortable as a compromise and see if we can meet together with them to work, work something out if there's a difference somewhere.
Okay, but just so you know, when it's set up as, it's coming back to them just because out of respect, but we're not making changes, that whole getting together compromise thing for me is already.
But the, the fact is, this, this actually, one council member at the last meeting says, well, just to get things straight, we could just approve it now and there's nothing they could do. And the answer is no, that's not true. Legally, if there's substantive changes, it has to come back to planning commission.
Only you that the council deems it to be substantiated and well-thought-out changes.
Yeah, if they make changes that are, don't make any change to the, you know, the actual meaning or intent in there, then yeah, they can change some wording around it. There was some of that that happened.
Yeah, a lot of that.
Actually, one of the things that I think was an improvement in the wording in terms of acceptability for them is changing the word trails to walkways or pathways in a lot of places because that kind of takes that stigma of trails off of it. because that kind of takes that stigma of trails off of it. And then they seem to be much more agreeable to that terminology.
And did they use some kind of definition for pathways and trails to decide which one was more appropriate?
No, it's just walkways, you decide what type of walkway, whether it's paved or whether it's dirt.
Meaning, hey, this is used for primary.
They don't believe in walkways, they, all they have is a path. You walk on the dirt, you wear it down the grass and that's how you go around. And then you don't have to spend any money to put sidewalks in.
So in one place, it's pat and
No, it's going to be walkways.
Trails was replaced with walkways and another place it was, no, that's, it was the place with pathways.
They want to spend money.
Okay.
Yeah, they do want some.
They want to spend significant money to put sidewalks.
We should.
Look, they are very leery of the word trails, so that's why there was some substitute wording proposed and accepted that makes it more amenable to
What is, what is the issue with the word trail?
You picked it up, you have a day, remember?
That's right.
Do you need a copy?
But it's different than
I think the main concern is because when people, when they picture trails nowadays with all the other, couple that went on with all the trail questions.
That's right, I don't have nearly the issues as they do. I'll be looking at it.
Do you want my copy?
I'm good.
All right, so can we go with seventeen and start to see if there's concerns? We can start to, like, pull them out and decide what to do with it until that point? Just wander through it and decide what's what.
Okay, so.
The only significant change on there, I think, was under the section for natural preserve, where they struck out the section that says, however small scale buildings are structured, they're to be repartied, blah, blah, blah. That was struck out because they did not want to include that statement about putting structures and such into the natural preserve.
So they don't want any definitions?
So the question is, did they look at the results of our public input at all?
Yes.
And did they look at question 24 that says, how should that property be used? And it says, hmm, over 60% of the people that answered these questions, both, well, the survey and the open house, want nature trails and walking paths in that park and
Well, don't forget, nature preserve is a type of property, not a place.
Yeah, this is about
No, I'm saying this, on page seventeen, nature preserve is a type of property, not a place.
Yeah, this is a zoning.
So what we're saying is, is that the overall concept might be this. At any point in time, you can change those ideas as you see fit.
And what I see is a few people deciding against the wishes of the people in the village, the residents of the village that responded to our surveys and open houses.
But we didn't ask them anything about a nature preserve piece of property. We asked them about the wildlife park, two different things.
Now, you are
So we can't, we can't do that without researching and saying, what would we like to do with that park? It still doesn't matter what the state we have.
Well, wait a minute.
We didn't ask about this.
Okay.
This is the type of zoning.
One at the time.
Okay. Pick one.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was not, I was just saying, we're stuck on a piece of property.
You're saying the village council has to analyze it? It ain't their job to analyze it, it's the planning commission's job to do that. Then you make a decision on what we come up with.
Correct.
And they did. They don't want that in there.
Right.
It's kind of cut and dry. This, this
I think we want to see
This states that, oh, can I explain?
Go ahead, you're next.
When you're ready.
Sorry, Rick.
Okay, I mean, I see that. This states that buildings, structures related to a park or conservation use such as gazebos, I would have said, you know, pavilions for picnic areas, but I don't know if gazebos got in there somehow. Boardwalks or trail systems are appropriate in natural preserve areas. Everywhere else they are, all over the state of Michigan, if you get out the atlas, for instance, of the state of Michigan, it lists all the different amenities and uses that go on in parks. They list which ones in each park. And trails are in just about every public land in the state. And so are picnic areas in most of them and boardwalks on areas of trail that need to be, that are wet. So the idea that those are not appropriate in natural preserves, I just don't understand where that comes from.
Can I say one? The way I read this, them striking it out, they're just striking out the examples?
Yes.
Not saying that we're not having it, they're just saying, let's not put any examples in this paragraph.
That was my beginning blanket statement. It's pigeonholing examples. We're not worried about the examples, we're worried about the vision.
This does not say that you cannot have a trail in that park.
No, it's just, they're just saying, we're not going to put any examples in this paragraph.
Correct, I mean
That's the way I read it.
I do too.
Okay, so they're not saying no, they're just saying, let's not put any examples.
You were sitting here in their workshop meeting on the master plan, I was. I know exactly what they were doing.
Okay, well, that's the way I read it, is what I'm saying.
It's the document, it's the document. I, what they think sometimes is like, very interesting, but the document doesn't say it's not going to be there. So in the event that something occurs and we want to put it in there, this does not say that you cannot have trails in that preserve area.
Or any of these things, so just not putting examples.
Now that you explained it that way, you're right.
Okay.
May I add to that?
So are we good with seventeen?
So the next one is page thirty-three. It's the exact same thing.
We're going, Larry. Page what?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
It's the exact same thing. So you can get to thirty-three in that yearbook.
Okay, so we're just, we're striking another example.
It's the same exact verbage.
It's the same example, different page.
Same exact verbage.
So I would, I would like to, on page thirty-three then, add to that and just express that this is a future land use, but the actual, exact verbiage of the land use comes from the related zoning ordinance that will explicitly state what is and what is not permitted.
So right now, this is the future land use, this is the concept. The exact requirements for that particular type of zone would be defined in the zoning plan if we updated according to this plan. Is that correct though? Maybe, maybe, okay. But I mean, the, the actual zoning ordinance is what's going to be based upon this here. So when we get to the zoning, that's when we could take a look and say, okay, what things do we want to include explicitly or explicitly? Well, that's not even, that's not the master plan, that's, that's after the master plan is approved, that the zoning ordinance is changed.
That's what I mean, but that's what I mean.
So I'm just saying, this is just a guide for the zoning.
So the next page, so the next page is forty-three.
Forty-three, I missed it.
Forty-three?
Where it says, natural features and recreation?
Forty-three.
Well, no, that's not, ours is education.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go to forty-eight or nine. Go to forty-eight or nine, something like that.
No, I got blank.
Natural features.
Find, find this page. Natural features and recreation.
Got it?
Those are now
It's after forty.
Yeah, that's page, I don't know.
All right, the only thing that they changed on that one was, there is no North County Trail Loop anymore, it's been eliminated by Oakland County.
So we deleted it because it's no longer
Yeah, and then they
I think we did that.
Yeah, we capitalized.
And they agreed with you.
Forty-two, forty-three.
We questioned it, but we didn't know for sure.
Should intermediate be struck because intermediate's no longer there?
Correct.
Forty-six?
What's that, Liz?
Intermediate, what, where?
Intermediate school is no longer.
Where are we, where?
The bottom of parks are not the same page.
Instead of capitalizing it, we need to strike it out because we don't know if we have an intermediate.
Well, they shouldn't be capitalized.
What are you looking at?
Well, do you mind if you guys do that one?
They're lowercase, that's, that was the correction.
Oh.
We made that lowercase.
The same one we were on?
This is, this is the correct.
Or just these things?
Yeah, they made it lowercase instead of uppercase.
Okay, so good point, it should not be intermediate and.
So with the elementary schools?
Yeah.
Why don't we just say with the schools located along South Street?
It would be school.
Just say, school general?
The elementary school located, there is no elementary school on South Street.
So there's only one, there's not
There's no varsity.
That's varsity.
Don't get too crazy.
But it doesn't say that.
It's along South Street, you're allowed to
But it's varsity.
No, you can get into it.
Yeah, be easier to shut a road, right?
I'm just saying, elementary school.
So leave elementary school.
It don't mean a whole heck of a lot of nothing anyways, I don't
All right.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
A question about that. The, as far as the intermediate school, as
We crossed it out.
I know. As far as the intermediate school, the, the athletic additions outside, aren't they, didn't they belong to either the village or the township?
No.
No.
All school property, the park, the playground and the ball field.
Now which, now which, which one are you talking about? Are you talking about the
Hey, berries there that are up near kids' backyard.
Berry stuff or the other school?
Well, they're near your backyard too.
Intermediate school.
And all that.
All that stuff's berries, that fifteen acres or whatever, all that is and he's allowing kids to play out there, he could put up a big old
And then, I was going to say, that was a good point because people were concerned saying that that was a community park.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
And the reminder is, that is private property and that is a private facility now.
Actually, when the school put that in, they designated that a community park in order to try to get money from the community to put any, put up.
Right, but you bought it.
Sticking it up right here. They're sticking it up right here.
I would not be letting
I know that's wrong, I'll tell you that.
Now, what you just, now, what you just, just for, just as a point of reference, what you just did is what the example, I can't remember Larry Tanya said, if this thing goes to the village council and they find something like we just found, that's considered a minor change and they wouldn't have to send it back for, they would just pass it on.
That's fine, okay. Hey, we know, we know where they stand already.
Okay, so the next one is a map.
They don't have the maps.
Okay.
They don't have the maps.
Well, we have some.
Which maps are That doesn't look any good.
I want that.
That's changing to village park, all the village park and all the maps.
Well, there is a change on sixty-two.
I seen one down here, Wes. Yeah, that or that, historical sites?
Oh, you mean relabeling it as
OWPP.
We're not, we're not there yet, hold on. But there's a map right there and the only thing we're doing is just relabeling it.
OWPP.
Well, no, we're not doing anything. Because this is the one where we called Susan and they wanted to know about the placement of the dots.
Yes.
And they called Susan and said, that came from the thing, so we left it alone.
Yeah, by the way, that was one of the things, somebody wanted to remove the dots from the wildlife park that we're placing. And I said, no, because that's part of the public and we are not going to remove
Yes.
Remove the dots, because what?
No, they didn't do that.
We're not going to do those in that park.
And the dots.
They didn't do those.
This is showing
Okay, they didn't do that.
They did not do that once it was confirmed.
Where'd you get that?
Mary. Because I have my older copy that I used during the review.
So the first, first one is
Is this the one on forty-four?
No, it's not in here, it's not in the
Is there an issue with it being called a trail system, using the word trail?
That's actually not our map.
That's Oakland County.
I don't know what we
So state has it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so the next change was on the sixty-two, on the goal thing. This is there.
Goals and objectives. So we got three, history, goals and objectives.
And that's just an example, right? No, yes?
Oh, yeah, the last item, item six.
Isn't that just an example?
No, they struck out three-story. What if you have a basement?
No, what they did was, what they did is moved, they struck
You went too far.
The three-story. No, I didn't.
We struck the three-story.
Did I?
This is where we're
You're right, you're right.
The backside of this page.
Sixty-two, they struck out this example.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
It does not break my heart at all.
Oh.
And we, and we changed the order of one, they, we moved one up.
Yep.
Which is
Okay.
We, we made number two encourage newer types of businesses that can thrive in the current downtown.
You moved what, no?
It doesn't matter, it's the same.
So this is, this is number two. It used to be number five, we moved it up because they thought that that, they wanted to emphasize that as a more important objective.
Okay, that was page sixty-two.
Okay.
What's the next one, Bill?
The next one is flip over the map.
Sixty-four.
And sixty-four, and that's the one where they whacked the rental family housing thing. And they moved six, or they moved what would have been number nine from below, from there up to that one. So the new residential development was in the goal below and non-residential? And they said, just move that up to residential.
In the wrong place, so we moved
Sixty-two, okay.
So it's the same and then they just
Well, it was number ten.
How come mine say downtown development and yours says non-residential? I'm on the wrong page?
Could be.
We're on sixty-four, huh?
I'm on sixty-two.
Okay, you got to go another page. The other side of the map.
So it wasn't really, there was a few minor tweaks there, but it wasn't, it's pretty much what you guys had.
Ten.
And you'll see, right, I was gonna say number three and number nine.
And ten.
Little verbiage changes.
Yeah.
Well, ten was moved up to six, yeah.
Where are you at?
Um, on the bottom of page sixty-four, number three and number nine had words struck.
Okay, tenants.
And that was actually a good catch because.
And housing.
Tenants have no, they don't own the property, so it wasn't appropriate to include them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then the next one was just right across from that, which was the walkability. And they just basically eliminated four, which there's no longer a link, or no longer, there's no longer that north trail route, this is. And that's where you see some of the language that talked about changing trails to pathways.
Yeah, I mean, that verbiage, I mean, that's.
And then what, it's not doing anything.
And there they explicitly added about not to include the wildlife preservation.
But that was along the creeks.
No, 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 that's the wildlife preservation part, that's the forty-four acre.
Walkability.
Yeah. Provide sidewalks and paths to existing.
But not to include.
In other words, you can't, you can't walk through there.
To or through.
Not what I'm telling you, or.
This says to existing.
Provide sidewalks, pathways to existing proposed recreation, so they're telling you, you can't put a sidewalk or a pathway.
To.
In the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park.
Actually, what it says, along the creek, exactly.
Well, I was just saying along the creek.
It says to.
Along the creeks.
Because that's, the whole thing was here, was about putting walkways or trails along the creek. And Dan said, no, we are not gonna do that within the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park. And he wanted that explicitly stated.
Well.
That we wouldn't do it by a creek.
No, it's, it's okay to be by a creek, I, I pointed out, I pointed on that map to him and I said, look, if you take a look at that map.
Okay, what did he specifically want?
Ninety-five percent of the creek bank is outside of that park. So he, well, anytime they talk about anything related to the creek, his concern was, no, we don't wanna do anything in that wildlife preservation park.
Okay, there's two differences, there's the creek, then there's forty-four acres of wildlife preservation.
That has a small piece of the creek bank, one side of the creek.
Yeah, okay, so I think it should be struck.
I made that point.
But, but, but the not to include Ortonville.
Well, I agree.
Anybody else have an opinion?
Um.
Do you guys don't wanna strike it, I'm fine with that.
There's several reasons for not including that. One of them is our master plan, which this village council approved, twice. It says partially, it says, in addition to protecting these natural areas as necessary from development. It also says to make, or to develop trails through them so that people can actually use them. And this, so that was in the master plan, and this is against that, it goes against that. It was also in their Brandon, Ortonville Recreation Master Plan, which they approved, and it goes against that. It's also going against the survey results from the residents that bothered to, that took the time to respond to our surveys or to, um, come to our open houses. And give us their opinions. So these folks have decided to ignore all those things, even though they approved them in the first place. They wanna ignore it, anything to do with that so-called wildlife preservation park, which is a whole other issue, which we probably won't get into today.
Actually, I would like to touch on that very topic just real briefly because I definitely do not disagree with what you said. However, we have to take into account that whether we agree with it or not, whether we think it was the right thing for the community or not, there was a resident, a motion passed and adopted by the village. That designated that as the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, and there are certain restrictions that were included in the language of that resolution when it was passed. And I think that we have to say, much as this is a plan and vision for the community, we also have to accept that because that was an official motion that was passed. The restrictions that they put within that motion on that piece of property also have to be respected and maintained. So I think that when I read through that and looked at the language of it, I don't think the language of that resolution necessarily eliminates the possibility for paths through there. The main language in there says no developed paths or trails. And I think that we could, we can, we could quite easily, and I even made this point, and I did see some, some agreement with some of the other council members that. I said, you know, it would make sense in the, in the interest of preserving the park to mark or designate the appropriate trails for people to walk on within that park. And that would be what I would, would say would be our approach towards that piece of property is to try to stay within the bounds of that resolution, but promote marked pathways, primitive pathways. That can be designated so people can stay out of the sensitive area.
Okay, Claire, I think you explained it enough to us.
Yeah.
Can that resolution be changed?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. Yeah, a resolution is, a resolution is not an ordinance.
Okay, very good.
A resolution can be changed.
So when we, when we vote out all these people out of the village council and get people that want stuff that they asked for in the questionnaires and that can be changed.
There we go.
Okay, so I have two thoughts on this number five, the first thing is, um, the wildlife preservation park designation was put into place after the last master plan and after the parks in Rock. Statements, so any of the changes are possible. Second thing is, as I mentioned to council.
What do you mean?
At any point in time, we can pay paradise and put up a parking lot and that can be changed. So are we going to.
I don't think Narren Park should be in there.
Let sleeping dogs lie at this point and move on, and it can be changed at any point in time? Or are you going to tell them you're not going to budge and send it back to them and they're not going to budge and nothing's going to change at any point in time? So that's what it comes down to with verbiage.
That's why they didn't include Narren Park on there is because.
I don't like why Narren Park, I mean, why don't we call out all the other parks and why, why is that one just called out? It should be more, it should be broad, just parks.
Does anybody really know what.
Creek.
A wildlife, do they have wildlife preservation parks in the United States?
Yeah.
You wanna hear, bud?
Yeah.
They have what?
You wanna hear?
No, not right now.
They have structures like viewing platforms where you can watch wildlife and all kinds of things like that.
And that can be added at any point in time, it's a breathing document.
Okay.
Keep in, keep in mind, yeah, this is not, this is not law, this is a plan.
For now, and we can change it later.
Yeah.
I'm with you, Tanya.
Following along with their other suggestions, that whole number five could end right after village.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that was what they suggested before, right? Took away all the examples of everything, just.
Make it broad.
Ended it, areas in the village.
That's a good idea.
But they added specific.
I, I understood, I'm like the village, I'm like.
Which is unusual because they took it away on other places, but I don't care.
I sure do.
Cause if you wanna have that, if somebody comes in with wanting to put those paths in that parkway and it can't get past the village council, they got hell to pay for it, so I'm not worried about it.
So let me just point out, one more thing about this, the village council members who support that incorrect designation of that park. Cause, you know, from a wildlife biology standpoint, either wildlife habitat protection or wildlife population protection, it's completely baseless. And was, no justification was given for it whatsoever that makes, that means anything. So to me, it's totally invalid, but anyway.
Want to say your point?
No.
Oh, gosh.
We're talking about an important thing here. I don't know why.
No, but, I mean, I'm, I'm, look, in twenty twenty, we're gonna have different players on here, so.
Should we actually be constrained in managing our largest village property?
We're going to be, did you watch the tape?
You're, you're not necessarily constrained, it's, it's an idea, a thought put down on a piece of paper that can be changed and altered at any time.
Well, as long as that resolution stands, there are.
That's quite a good point.
Very significant restrictions on what can be done with that property.
The resolution does not state that walkways can be put in.
Oh, it does, oh, here's my point, before we get too far, I.
Hey, that's one second, yeah?
The, um, trails that are in there are only in the very northeast part of the property. Next to the north half of Crescent Hill subdivision, in the upland cedar forest. There are some informal trails that come out of residents' backyards and they form kind of a ad hoc trail system in there. Some are more obvious than others, but it doesn't allow, um, access to the south two-thirds of any part of that. Which is one of the things I object to about this, that we're only supposed to, if we want to make use of that place, we're only supposed to go and use the northern third. And not have any access into the rest of it, which is also very interesting.
But, but, um, we can't use any of it now, so we can't really talk about what we're gonna use, cause right now we can't.
How do you get to that northern, you have to cross private property to get to.
No, you go right in from Mill Street.
You can come in from Mill Street, but it's not.
Right next to Dan Edgman's, um, house is a perfect access.
Yeah.
And he's got a perfect trail behind his house to get in.
And I think that is, uh, that is, that is the area I would like to see approached with this, because right now, the only good access to that property is through private property. That is immediately abutting that park. And unless, the private residents, I mean, most, as you mentioned, a lot of these trails come from people's backyards.
Okay, we're circling back to number five, not five year missions.
Do we want to modify that? That's a battle that we cannot win.
We can't, it's gonna be a bad thing out there.
But it's a battle we don't wanna give up on. So, so you're moving on to the next one here?
We're moving on to the next one, so we're, are we gonna stretch out, right, dark in there at all?
Uh-huh.
So we're gonna stop at the village on item five?
No, no.
Um, just a reminder, I'm not arguing anything, every single thing that has changed costs us money, we're over budget. So is it worth it to cross off a line here and there and spend hundreds of dollars at the end of this?
That's exactly what council does to.
I know.
I mean, four meetings, and that's why I asked, how many meetings did you guys meet? And you guys get paid way more than us, and I saw it with the capital I and the E and it's like.
Actually, let me, let me validate.
All right.
All right.
Mel.
Yeah.
Keep respectful.
Can we ask Bill to validate that statement about it costing money, because I think that since we have it in a Word format now, can't we make these changes? Cause we haven't sent this back to McKenna, have we?
No, but we had to have them prepare it and pay for them to turn it into Word and then send it back to us. So all the, all the stuff that we've done previously with the putting the maps all in one direction and all the, you know, this and that and every little grammatical change and all that cost us money. You're.
But we were batching that.
Okay, so at this point, if we make another change, it will cost us more money with McKenna.
Eventually, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to send this back to McKenna and McKenna will put it in the proper format and do a finalized version and.
But if we make some changes now and she updates the Word, is that going to increase the cost of that?
No, other than the fact that, you know, like, I would, I would strongly say that you guys are barking up the wrong tree by changing this number five.
I agree.
If you change number five, you might as well just plan on either, you know, one or two things can happen. They made it abundantly clear about the OWPP, and any conversation that changes that or whatever is either gonna do one of two things. Is either gonna bounce it back to you guys once again, and we'll play ping pong, or I won't, you guys will. Or technically, if you get to a point where the council has expressed, the council has an obligation to send back to you where they have specific problems. They have pointed out an area where they have a specific problem, like it or not, you know? And if you send it back to them and say, you know, heck with you, we're disregarding what you said on that specific problem. You're well documented in your concerns, you know, and, and you've gone on the record on that.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't mean you necessarily agree, but at the point in time that, you know, that you become, for lack of a better term, they, they have the overall say or final say. At the point in time that you become, I'm trying to think of a better word than obstinate, but, you know, about a point, is they can just, at that point in time, say, you know, hey, we attempted, we sent it back with our things. They sent it back and they understood that we had a problem at this point.
We are not open to anything you have to say.
And, and so they would just say, there's no sense in it. Actually, they could lower the boom and say, okay, it's bonfire enough, we're approving this and go live your life.
Yeah, but they, they really shouldn't.
Don't have to agree with it.
Because our hands are a team of people.
Cause we took out the word sewer, we conceded to that.
Right.
Because they didn't want it, so I guess we're.
And now trails is a bootleg.
And if sewers come in. Well, I, I think. And again, I understand there's, and what was pointed out in this is if you look at the map, you know, there's school, but like Larry said, there's, there's.
Ninety-five percent of precincts are not in that.
We're only talking about the creek area, you know, if you look at the school map on that side, if you wanted to put a trail on the school side. If you're well-loving naturalist and you go to the school and say, hey, we would like to develop this for educational purposes, there's nothing they could say about it. There is a real nice trail.
Yeah, there's a trail system in there already.
Right into Brown Park and that.
And a lot of railroad ties.
Okay, so then, yeah. Okay, the next one where it says renovate Sherman Park concession stand, that was a good catch, I think on everybody's part, plus it helps us with, we've applied for two different grants. Uh, through the DNR to renovate the concession stand.
Same page.
Right below, same page.
This one?
Yeah, we added that to, you know, that makes sense.
Well, it's gotta be in the master plan or they won't, that's part of the gig, right?
That'll help us. The next page.
Promote building owners.
Number three, we got ahold of, of McKenna, and after three consultations with McKenna, they couldn't explain it and suggested that we strike it, so the council followed suit and struck it.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah.
Obviously encouraged is a bad word.
It's not wrong enough.
It's another word game.
Yep.
Consider unified trash pickup vans.
Was moved down to number nine, it wasn't struck, seven, the second half of seven was moved down to nine.
So it has its own.
Right, it kinda doesn't go together.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Wasn't me, but.
And I got the, and I'll take, I got the noisy neighbor thing struck, so.
Right. And then of course, number eight.
That, that just, that just took out, that's what.
The examples, right.
It was just like way too many detailed examples, and so we don't think that much.
It leaves it broad and open and you can.
Kind of like the Narren.
Yeah, we wanted to make it less specific, more open.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, yeah, like I said, a lot of these changes I thought were reasonable changes and I didn't have a problem with a lot of changes.
But you, but you say that, but, but having like Narren Park, it's not open.
Well, you know.
I'm just saying, it was picked and chosen.
There were ones that I disagreed with, but the consensus from the rest of the council overruled my.
There you go.
And the next page, and the next page is kinda the same thing that we just talked about for quite some time, so.
Excellent, all right, we're fine.
And then traffic calming, we, the only reason we struck that is because it's covered later in initial. And then you go to the next page.
Number five.
One.
That's already been in the master plan for.
Yeah.
For a long time.
We end up doing the recreation plan at some point?
Current.
Yeah.
That's the next thing. Actually, I don't think the planning commission's involved in the recreation plan.
I agree.
You're striking it again?
Yeah.
All right, so can we move on now to the mobility plan?
Let's do it, okay.
And it's, uh, really, and there was nothing, no change there. So, it's really page.
There was a lot of questions, but I think.
Seventy-six has.
Yep.
Seventy, yeah, seventy.
Pedestrian bicycle travel, is that what we have to?
Um, yes.
Uh, yes.
Ortonville, right.
He's wanted that, uh.
Boy, they hate that trail shit, don't they?
Well, that's again, that's.
What we had again is that.
That's that northern, that's that northern.
May, may, Melanie be respectful.
So, okay, if we ever have opportunity to get money for our pathways or our trails in the village, we don't show them in the master plan, so we'll never.
No, there's, there's, there's a whole bunch of walkabilities and trails, that, that one is the disconnect again with the northern Oakland county.
Loop trails.
Trail loop.
There's, you told me this Oakland County linked path and trail system that included a link through our community that has no, that no longer exists, so.
So we're good with that.
It's no longer relevant, that's why it was taken. It's not that it's, and you can see how much the talk about walkability and stuff is still in the master plan, so I think that that's a positive thing, that they didn't strike out all the walkability. They, they did embrace that in the rest of the master plan at least, just not specifically for that one piece of property.
And seventy-eight's the same thing, all it is is Oakland County cross.
And in fact, what they did was if you read that, if you read, it says, improving a walkway system within the village.
Yep.
So.
It's pretty general and it's good.
There it is. Seventy-nine was just changing.
Sounds good, that's a good political statement.
Yeah, very political.
Uh, seventy, seventy-nine, or not, yeah, seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine was just one little.
Yeah, we're in Oakland, Tuscula.
They touched on it.
Do I lose that one?
Yeah, good catch, whoever caught that one.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Yep, page eighty-one was just an insert of a word.
Was from the hospital. Within the village.
This one.
Okay, we got this one.
That's all.
Which should've been there anyway.
Yeah.
Yep, yes, within.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, the cover's that, right?
Yep.
The others just.
There we are, um, on implementation.
Eighty-seven, I added some. Eighty-seven?
Eighty-one.
Yeah. I thought we were done with eleven. How'd you get to eighty-seven?
Cause I was flipping. Where are we at?
All right. Eighty-seven.
Hold on, where are we at, Liz?
Eighty-seven, they added some correct.
Are we into implementation now or something?
Yes, we are.
I just corrected some of the incorrect.
Websites.
Gotcha, yeah.
Thank you.
Question I had, did you, do you send me an email noting to re-set my password or?
Yeah.
When did you send that?
A long time ago.
Yeah.
No, she did one time and I tried it, I couldn't get in, I had to one through six, but I couldn't go in.
Oh yeah, cause we added in some blocks in there, right?
Cause I talked to you a couple days ago, right, Monday or Tuesday, or, you know, last Friday, wasn't it, Thursday or Friday?
I type in Lee and everything comes up Liz.
Okay. The, the next, the next one, when you get into these colored charts.
Yeah.
The, excuse the format, but, and that, but what they wanted done was, and it's not a bad idea, is add the key at the bottom of each page.
So they know what.
You didn't have to go back and.
They don't have to keep flipping back and forth.
And they, some of them, you see that they, in here, they didn't really change the.
We put recommended at the top of the timeframe.
Yeah, recommended, and they added village council to a couple and.
Yeah, I've seen that. Yeah, I've seen that.
But it's just minor stuff, they didn't delete anything on those two pages.
Not on those two pages.
Right.
I think they did change some priorities on it.
They changed a few priorities, but.
Okay, what's VM?
Village manager.
Village manager.
Okay.
See if they have to.
One and only.
It's on your key there somewhere.
We need to hurry up, I'm running out of coke.
So what, I don't know if, I don't know if the irony.
Or battery.
I don't know if the irony occurred after all these things get dumped on my plate, I found another job.
How's it going, I looked down here.
Well, that's why it's VM, it doesn't say BS.
Eighty, the recommended timeframes and then some of the adding the key.
Might not be a bad, a good idea to have BS charges.
Indeed, and also in that key, you don't have DDA either.
Keep flipping back and.
That is.
So when you go to the very first page, they do define all, we only put this portion of the key on all the ones, so the priorities in that match would be seen on all of them.
Why was, I guess without looking, number on page eighty-eight, one, seven, architectural design standards, why is VC in there, not DDA, DDA does the downtown district standards for their businesses as well as planning commission?
Oh, wait a minute, let me go back.
Which number is it?
One, seven on page eighty-eight.
They get grant money, grant money to do historical.
Right, DDA is not on there.
Actually, I think it's because one dot seven is at the commercial corridor area.
The DDA though.
No, that's not, DDA is not in here, they didn't go there because it's outside the DDA. We had that discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, because that says commercial corridor, which is the M fifteen.
They have properties on M fifteen, will appoint and, no, ANW is historic, not DDA, will appoint is DDA, and, oh no, he's not on, he's across the street, okay.
There's a DDA number somewhere.
So appoint can be a policy.
Yeah, so I mean.
Okay, okay, if they're happy with it, that's fine, I just.
So that's two eight, it's where the hacking, or some of it starts.
Wow, the underground wires, they moved it up big time, huh?
Yep.
So now all that stuff.
They, they struck the.
Everything.
Well, they struck the gazelle ball because basically only one person brought that up, and there's really not room for it. Building the bandstand by the old mill, one person brought that up, and we're already building a.
But you put underground wires in though, was that in the thing?
Yeah, we added, we.
We added it, was that one of the items?
No, that was a new one.
That was suggested by some council members, and, and there was a lot of consensus that that would be a really nice idea. I thought that was one of the really good additions from the council, actually.
And some of these, some of these were basically eliminated because they were redundant, they were saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Numerous times, you know, so it's not that the idea was eliminated.
They had talked about trying to strike more things, but we did have a discussion that this is more of a wish, this is, this is not saying we want all these within this timeframe, it was more like, this would be nice to do in this timeframe, and then they said, well, as long as it's just a suggestion and it's not firm commitment, then they were okay with it.
And some of these were listed, some of these were listed as goals and not really initiatives and vice versa, so if you go like on three, four, if you remember back in our goals, it was struck in three, four in the goals, but it was left in here on initiatives over three, four, so you kind of, so just because they struck a lot, it might have been covered in goals or redundant, so.
Or in some cases, shipped it to a different section.
So if nobody's got any questions on those two, two ninety-two.
Nothing.
Ninety-three, okay, let me get into, we're out of the goals here, and I don't think there was nothing changed there. So then, the very last thing we did, so that's it, okay, the very last thing we did, and here's the, just so you guys know, when, when we talked to McKenna, hold on, when we talked to McKenna, the, when we print these for publication, the only thing that has to be included is appendix D, okay? Now, what they're gonna do, and what everybody agreed to do, was they will say, there'll be a statement here, that will say something along the lines of. Appendix A, B, C, and D, or appendix A, B, and C, and then list what they are, and tell what they are, are available online and at the office, so it's not that they're gonna be.
It's in here, I was gonna say it's in your table.
If you look on page V.
Yeah, down at the bottom there, I saw that.
On file.
And so they will say, you know, so it was, it was, you know, the, because we were gonna start.
Those weren't messed with.
No, absolutely not, they, they absolutely, we said, and I, I came back and said, appendix A, B, C, they went out, however they went out, it didn't matter if there's misspellings or whatever, you don't touch it, you don't.
Yeah, it's primarily, it's data.
It's data.
But I didn't want them eliminating some of the things where, that may have been negative in their minds.
And that's, they're available for public, they will be available for public consumption, both on the internet and at the office, and there'll be an explanation of what they are in the plan. That does a couple of things, number one, it saves money because you're not printing as much stuff.
One person did raise concern about, well, if we include all this public input and then they don't see in the plan, isn't that going to be a problem, but I think that consensus was, well, no, it's better to be transparent, show all the public input, because that's the basis of the plan, and so that way you can see the connection.
That should see what the plan was.
My question was, I thought originally we said available upon request, because if you say documents on demand and we choose not to use that anymore, we go to something different, we've stuck ourselves.
Does it say on documents on demand or online?
It says documents on demand, I thought we decided it should be available upon request from the village office.
No, we also said, we also said, we also said online.
Online and office.
Right, but if we don't have documents on demand anymore.
If you just say.
You would have it on, you'd have it on the website then, as a PDF.
That's.
So it's online.
I could also email and have it sent to me, I can also call in and have it mailed if there's multiple ways.
If you want to truly be generic, you could say in available electronic format, and then that way, it doesn't matter where it's coming from, it's electronic format and it's covered.
Did you take my suggested motion for that?
Do we want to make that minor change?
I think it needs to, because.
You'll make a change to that, and they never, that was office, so you don't have to.
Because originally we just said available.
That wasn't what they did.
Yeah, but no, we did agree that we should make it available, so if we just say, available in the office or in electronic format, and then leave it at that, then it covers.
So, the only change that you're suggesting is to eliminate the intermediate and.
And the S after schools.
And the S after schools, and I've got that marked, therefore now, you would submit, make a motion.
And then the.
I.
Ah, there it is.
But mine's the original.
Wait, 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 wait.
Is this the crick?
Is it in red?
No, that's one, that was the one for the zoning change.
Hold on, I'll grab that.
No.
Nope, nope, this is it.
Oh, this one, oh, no, this is the master plan, so.
Okay, so is this still the motion we want to go with?
I'm not ready yet.
No.
You just put yea or nay on there, that's what we do.
No, we use this at the very end, but, but you can modify it a little bit.
Adopting the master plan.
Yeah, make a motion that the village planning commission does hereby adoption of the master plan.
With the two changes.
With the extremely minor insignificant modifications.
Well, with the two changes, right.
As amended.
It's already, you sure they did, you sure, you ain't the one that slashed all this stuff out, Larry did he, so, across out all these items?
No, it was, I, I can, I can guarantee, I was at all those meetings, it really was the council that scratched all that stuff out.
Rick, go ahead.
Okay, on page ninety-two, four dash ten, four dot ten, on the wide sidewalk, the raised decking and low lying areas for the residents of any location in the village to reach the downtown, and somehow Granger Road is crossed out. Why in the world is Granger Road crossed?
Because we're not specifically stating.
We are.
Because depending on. Oakland has already has, correcting, Granger already has the funds, I mean, I'm sorry, Oakland already has the funds, and so therefore we have to have Oakland in because we got the grant.
Right, yeah, part of that.
And other roads, it can be any road, and you can choose to add its, move the document.
But we specifically have a grant for Oakwood, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
What are we doing here?
So we slide.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is this mean that?
It's two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, which item was that, Rick?
Circular, page ninety-two, four point one oh.
Four point what?
Four point ten.
So from the park complex all the way to Deacon?
It's for, it's for them.
Well.
No, no, that's not even gonna get you to church street with that, not even, it's not even gonna get you up.
Because it's quite a steep in the backyard there where the pond is.
What?
It doesn't have to put a walkway or something, there's no way you're gonna give that.
Yeah, that's why.
Nor to have that.
It's so, it's not gonna get you. Sounds like a libel, it's not gonna get us anywhere.
Okay, all right, well. If we, if we make a motion to accept the planning, our plan, can we also in that motion include that of our dissatisfaction of removing the.
The park?
You can put anything in your motion as long as you don't tie it to the approval.
Right.
To the what?
To the approval.
Meaning the, meaning the.
Oh, just a comment to the village.
You can't say.
To be a comment.
Yes, we pass it if you do this.
No, no.
You can't do that.
No.
No, but I mean, just indicating our dissatisfaction of removing that, but we recommend approval of the plan as it's presented.
Or Bob, you go nay, you don't, when we have a roll call vote, you go no.
I don't want to vote no on the whole plan.
Right, right.
But I, I just would just like something that would indicate to them that.
Make the motion.
Here's the, here's the, here's the part that you gotta, read the part that you gotta. Bob, hold on, hold on one second, Bob, wait one second. Let us read you the motion that you need to move it on, okay? If you want to add something to it, then let's, you read that motion first.
Okay. So the motion would read.
No, this is, that's different, that's, and I'll point that out.
The motion would read, the village of Ortonville planning commission does hereby recommend adoption of the master plan by village council as amended.
Then if you wanted to add something to that.
Admiss concerns, admits, I can't talk.
Admisses.
Of the wildlife preservation park community input, or some community input against it, we, you can say something like that.
Yeah, I don't know what would be the.
It would be.
They wouldn't want my permission, but I, but I just wanted to understand that, you know, I, I agree with the plan, you know, just about a hundred percent, except for that, but yet I don't, and I agree, it's not worth the battle that would go on over that, over something that, if somebody, if something come up to do something there, we probably would get it anyways, but I, I think it's just, we spent time on it, I think we should let them know that we are.
Satisfied with their thoughts? If you said something like, although we are not in agreement with the wildlife, blah, blah, blah decisions, we are in agreement on passing this.
I don't think you want to use the word agreement, because then that's.
Well, that's what we're not in agreement.
You know, you can send emails and you can come to the meeting, and there's lots of.
That's kind of why I said maybe you could say something along, although you're disappointed with the decisions on the.
We could do that.
You know, although you're disappointed with the decision, it's on the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park.
I support you on that, I support you if you want to do that.
Disappointed of the removal.
Yeah, I support you with that.
Well, before I get any further along here, I still have, nobody answered the question except for money, of why Granger Road is struck out of this general idea of providing sidewalks or raised decking means sidewalks and low lying areas, so residents at any location in the village can reach the downtown. It originally had Oakwood, which we've talked about for years, and Granger Road.
Because then we'd have to list every single road and we can't.
No, that's not, that's not.
Give me a break.
No, what do you mean by that?
That is why we took Granger, we can't just list Granger, what about every other road?
You list Oakwood.
You got Oakwood on there.
Because of our grant, you have to list it in order to receive the grant.
Okay. But I think I wanted to include Granger. It doesn't really answer the question of why Granger Road at the south end has no, I mean, if the goal is for, to provide some kind of sidewalks so people can ride their bikes or walk from any part of the village into the downtown, then why strike out Granger Road?
Because there's, there's other language within that whole mobility section, goals, that say they want to improve the sidewalks within the village. We are calling out Oakwood because we got a specific grant on the table of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, like, like Tanya said, we don't go through and say, we've got engineering plans right now for Narren Ball and Myron, they're not listed on there, you know, so it's, we do have a grant though for the other one, to where we want to protect that grant and say, I'm going to a meeting next Wednesday, one of my last things, with the Oakland County Road Commission to say, what is our, what is our things that we need, and that is, you know, I'm gonna bring up sidewalks along Granger, sidewalks around the Oakwood, sidewalks around M fifteen.
Another eighteen months ago.
So you can walk along, you know, in my personal opinion, I don't think we should be paying for sidewalks around Granger or in Oakwood, I think Oakland County Road Chip and the Township should, because they're their roads, but they're, they're never gonna do anything because we're small potatoes.
Yeah, I, I also have expressed that, I thought that it was important to improve Granger. Because we do have residents that have safety concerns with that road.
Finally do something.
But they wanted to keep the emphasis.
Liz, you're my favorite now. You're sticking with me.
So Sherman, so chicken. You know, I have this reaction.
You better, because you got a couple more days to go.
Because I've been on this planning commission since two thousand and seven, I think, and we've been trying to get sidewalks on Granger Road, and every time it ever comes up, it's always, no, Oakwood Road, forget Granger Road.
How'd they get the road, how'd they get the sidewalk from the high school to downtown Ortonville?
Has Ron left?
The school pay for it?
No, they got, because it's within the right of way of the highway, they got federal money to pay for it.
Who's they, township?
Township, okay, but we don't have that option in Granger Road.
Nope, okay.
So what is our.
Bob, did you decide what you'd like to say for the?
I think I've lost it again, what was the, what was the word?
Disappointed, the word disappointed.
Disappointed, they're disappointed in there.
And I think you should include in there that it goes against the wishes of the village residents that have responded and gave us their, their goal.
I would probably use some phrasing like.
I don't think I would add a lot, I just want them to know that.
And I think that can be done separately, and I think that can be done, I mean, we're trying to be unified, and that's a personal opinion, not a commission-wide opinion, I mean, a planning commission opinion, that's a personal opinion as to who is frustrated or not.
I support you if you're gonna say the disappointed, but that's all, I'm not gonna go more into it.
If we wanted to do a battle with the village council, there's much bigger issues, I'm sure, than what that will ever be and.
Right.
And they know we weren't gonna be happy about it.
Oh, no.
So really stating that, just stating the obvious, saying this guy is blue.
They don't need us.
But I agree with them.
Liz, could you read that motion?
Control meaning and standard of service. So that's not even reminding us how.
Well, here we go, hold on.
I can't hear.
The motion so far is the Ortonville Planning Commission does hereby recommend adoption of the master plan by village council as amended.
With disappointment of removal of.
So why wouldn't you put that in the front?
Yeah, put that in the front.
Although the, although the.
Planning commission.
Planning commission is disappointed with the decisions on the Orton wildlife, Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park.
Removal of.
Put it at the front.
Okay, so the motion by, all right, so...
Although...
Motion to recommend to...
Hold on, hold on.
She's getting it.
Hold on.
Although the PC is disappointed.
Think, I don't want to type that.
Removal recreation, probably, as a recreation activity.
Although.
Although the planning commission is disappointed.
The council's disregard of the public input regarding the work.
No, no, we're not going that far, we're just...
You cannot speak for the public.
Yeah, we're not going that far, man.
I said, no, you didn't.
Disregard of the input.
No, they didn't.
No, we just said disregard of the input.
What do you got, Liz?
What do you got?
Oh, okay, although, my disappointment with...
The decisions regarding the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park.
What decision? I'll turn it later.
The council, the commission recommends approval to the village council as amended.
Is it decisions or changes?
It's all the same.
Regarding, related. Decisions. Decision.
Removal decisions, change.
Okay.
Read it back, please.
So motion by, seconded by, although the planning commission is disappointed with the decisions regarding the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, the planning commission recommends approval to the village council. I've got, I'm all the way up to the rezoning application.
How'd you?
Bill did it.
Where'd you go, Bill?
Oh, he typed it in the wrong spot.
I know, we were all saying.
That was close.
Almost there, hold on.
That was close.
Go.
Like that first pop, because the rest of it's just as ordinary.
Right. Very good, motion.
You're working hard for this one, Bob.
I really didn't want to, I just, I thought it would be just simple to add up just...
You want to just type it separate on a word, plain blank, so you can get it put in? And go back and...
Exactly what you said, right, Bob?
Yep. You did a good job working that one.
I know, it's way above my head. Okay, the motion is...
All right.
God, can my eyes are blurry, what the heck?
What the heck?
We're all safe.
Samuel L. Jackson.
Tick tock!
I'm concerned. That is not what I was thinking, what are you talking about?
What are you guys talking about?
What are you talking about?
All right, do we have it yet?
I'm trying.
You know, she had another coach.
Why, last night, a little change of subject, while she's typing, I'm trying to take the pressure off her. Had my last, I had my last council meeting here.
Oh, boy.
Full house, it was so funny, I mean, like, people from ten years ago who retired came back, it was like a full house.
Right.
Had to choke back when I, you know, my wife and my son drove up from Ann Arbor and...
Okay, I've got it.
You got it, okay, read it down. I'm trying to take the pressure off.
Although the planning commission is disappointed with the decisions regarding the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, the planning commission does hereby recommend adoption of the master plan by the village council as amended.
So move.
No, you made the motion.
Support.
Whatever.
Melanie.
Bobby the motion, I supported it.
Let me save this before anything happens, okay?
Good idea.
Yeah, because otherwise your battery's gonna run out.
All we need.
That would be good.
Okay.
Well, then we'd have to play back the video recording.
CIP.
And voted yet.
Who was the support?
No one.
No. And I'm assuming we're doing a roll call for this?
Yeah. Gonna call a roll call vote?
What's that?
You're gonna call for a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't hear people.
That's okay, I can't see.
I've got, I have hearing aids, the guy's gotta speak up.
Go.
MacCavinci.
Nay.
Nivell.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Palchen.
Nay.
Bryce.
Yes.
Hayden.
Yes.
McArthur.
Yes.
Anybody else can change your mind if you...
Oh, I thought, well, you motioned it, I support it, so we're...
All right, for all the confusion.
The CIP, the CIP is the next thing. The big change of that is if you go through their section by section, which I won't do tonight if you don't mind. I have adjusted it to reflect the things that are so far approved in the budget. And if you go to the final...
I can get one of those.
You did?
Let me see one.
There you go.
You got one this afternoon.
To go to the final page, what I did on the overall page, the last one, is I took everything that's so far in the budget for next year and listed that in its respective categories for next year, okay?
And...
Okay.
On the last page.
Yeah.
This page right here.
Yep, that shows you everything that is...
The money you got that you can spend.
Right, last, might even be the last two pages.
Per year.
No, it's the last.
Last page.
Last or second last page?
The last page, last page.
Right, okay.
So you pluck, you pluck the stuff there on the individual pages and put it on that page, so it shows you what you...
Are you rebidding then? Is that, the low bid was sixty-nine, need to rebid locally for a sidewalk parking lot, are we bidding that?
Um, yeah, we're gonna try to rebid that in pieces locally. See if we can't get it done.
Okay, so... So then at the next meeting, do we want to project out like a five-year plan?
Some of that's on there, but that, that would be a good idea to start, to start looking at, you know, priorities of different streets, you know, maybe different sidewalks. Some of, there's some placeholders in there, obviously, like we talked about earlier, Oakwood, phase two, because the council would...
Do you already have grant money lined up for that?
Correct, that's the two hundred...
Phase one and phase two?
Just phase two.
Phase two.
Phase one, we're wanting to do phase one, which they brought up at the last budget meeting of, so far it's like thirty thousand dollars.
Out of our pocket for that.
Out of our pocket for that. But, you know, we're meeting...
Do you have a list of the, the streets? I know at one point we had the streets, and I think you and Bob went through and prioritized which one should be next, like in order of...
And I didn't go, yep, very first page under street.
First page.
First page.
Obviously...
Each street is by date.
I will only went out...
Okay, that's not all the streets.
No, I only went out about five years.
The highest priority.
Okay, that's okay.
So...
So that will be, I see that changing, because that, okay.
And you guys, you guys are, you guys are free to do that. I mean, you can do a, you can do a twenty-year CIP if you want, but it's gonna change, you know.
By the day, by its twenty years, it probably won't be in Ortonville anymore. Probably be branded.
Yeah, not only realistically, when you take, talk about streets, there's the aspect of, you know, rating them in terms of their condition versus prioritizing which street needs to go first.
I know.
Because sometimes a street that's not in bad condition may be better to hit first with some preventive maintenance in a year in order to keep it, prolong its life, rather than let it get worse. And then you put off the street that's already bad until you can afford to.
But who makes the ultimate decision?
The big deal is, we go in and go up five years, and then we turn it over to the village council, and they, they're gonna adjust stuff, and if stuff happens, they're gonna eliminate stuff.
Ultimately, it's the village council, because it's part of the budgeting process, what you're gonna allocate the money to in the budget for that year.
Okay.
This is the plan of where we'd like to see the money allocated for the future, and when it gets to that year, it's up to the, the actual budget for that year, which of these projects can get completed with the budget that we have that year.
Okay.
But it's really good to have a plan, it's much better than no plan.
Oh, yeah.
Because Rose is about the only one that you could really expand out more than five years.
Equipment.
Equipment you can, I mean, like I put...
Capital equipment, trucks.
Yeah, but equipment and all that, well, other than the back hole, but there isn't the big expenditures like the roads.
One of the, one of the, one of the equipment deals that we did a, did some brainstorming on was like Ford truck, where we were gonna replace the Ford truck next year, and it would cost us like seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
Well, what Bob and the guys did is, there's only about fifty thousand miles on the truck. It's the, it's the rear frame and dumping mechanism because of the years with salt and stuff that, when you're trying to, you know, you're trying to lift with it all the time, that becomes a real maintenance problem and can eventually turn into a safety issue. So how do you fix that? You spend fifty-six hundred dollars, which council approved, to buy a new salter to where you don't have to, you know, a hydraulic solder.
Right.
To where you don't have to dump anymore.